Good evening. I'm gonna call together this session of, joint session of the Richfield HRA and the Richfield City Council Meeting. And first of all, I just want to point out, this is gonna be an interactive workshop. So we'll record as best we can, but people will be moving around. So I apologize if anybody's listening to this after the fact, if it's hard to hear. We'll do the best we can to keep using the microphones. So I'm gonna turn it over to Executive Director Stark and let him take it away.
Thank you Chair Supple and Commissioners and Council Members. I don't have a lot to say. My role today is, I'm gonna be trying to write down where I hear consensus. So consents. And if, to the extent that Stephanie doesn't, I'll try to come back toward the end and touch on next steps. And so with that, I'm gonna hand it to Julie to give an introduction.
Great, so Chair Supple and Members of the HRA and Council. Over the past several years, we have had several discussions about the city's need for affordable housing and its value to the community. In years past, the primary housing goal for the city has been to create a greater diversity of housing types, styles, and values. And new affordable housing was to be provided in mixed-income housing at a smaller percentage than market rate. That message has shifted somewhat as housing affordability across the metro area and the state has declined. So while policymakers have committed to preserving and creating the city's share of affordable housing through a variety of efforts, there is still a question of whether our efforts are sufficient has been raised in past months. And staff is really seeking some clarification and consensus, consensus on what policymakers' vision for affordable housing looks like. In addition, you have been asking us for some time to help communicate that vision to the community and clarifying your vision would help us to do that. So Neil is here as well to listen and learn, and Kate, in terms of our communication efforts. But I'm gonna turn it over to Stephanie Alice from Hugh Life. And she is a former coworker of Neil's and I have had some facilitation, facilitation training with her as well. And she's just amazing. So we decided to bring her in and work her magic. And I'm gonna just turn it over.
Thanks for having me. That's a tall order. We'll see how I do with that tonight. But it's nice to be here. Thank you. We've got a few objectives that we're gonna get through in the next 90 minutes. It's a little bit of an aggressive agenda, but we're here to make that happen. So just to help out the people in the back, I put them visually for you. Some of the objectives for tonight is to articulate what is affordable housing and what does it mean for the city of Richfield? To identify a collective vision for the city. That is where the consensus part will come, so that will be part of our process. We're gonna determine where those efforts should be focused in 2020 and create some marketing messages to be communicated to the residents. So that is our hope with the aggressive agenda. We've got that over here as well. We're gonna spend some time just introducing ourselves and getting to know a few things. I know you know each other, but I don't know you, so I'm gonna ask for that. We're gonna spend some time doing a little bit of data review. You've got some data from the city. We'll do our visioning activity, which is we'll use a workshop format for. We'll identify those priorities and then create those communication messages come the end of the night. Any questions you have for the process tonight? All right. So I'm just gonna ask everybody here that's participating to just share with me your name, where you grew up, and the type of housing you grew up in. So my name is Stephanie Alice. I was just model for you. I grew up in the city of San Luis Park, not very far from here, and I grew up in a single-family home. Who would be willing to start for me?
Sue Sandau. I grew up in Richfield and I grew up in a story and a half K-Cog, a very common house in Richfield.
My name is Mary Supple and I grew up in Columbus, Wisconsin on a dairy farm. So we were in a farmhouse. Thank you.
Simon Troutman. And I grew up in probably seven or more rental multifamily housing properties until we bought in Richfield and then, or in Bloomington, then South Minneapolis. And then about 35 years ago, my, we, my family moved to Richfield. We've been here ever since.
I'm Erin McDaniel. I grew up in a small town in Wisconsin. And the type of housing, we lived in single-family housing, but it was always rental and we moved every single year, as well as some creative housing spaces in non-traditional places.
Hi, my name is Maria Regan-Gonzalez. I'm the mayor and I grew up in multifamily, or multi-unit housing, rental and single-family housing.
Ben Whelan from City Council. And I grew up in a single-family home in Germantown, Wisconsin.
Thank you. So the question that we're gonna be answering tonight is, what should affordable housing look like in the city of Richfield? Without going to a textbook definition, what, how would you describe affordable housing? Anybody can answer that. What are some other words you would use for it? How would you describe that? What does that mean to you, affordable housing?
I would say it's safe housing that somebody can access without having to use too much of their income, so it doesn't put a strain on everything else.
The term affordable is different to everyone, right? And so it's not one standard.
I would just add stability. That it's not always stable, but that's the goal certainly.
I think similar to that, whatever, whatever it is per month, at the end of the month, you're not trying to figure out how to pay for either your, your rent or your mortgage. So that's not, that, you solve that problem more than a month or two in advance.
Thank you. So we're gonna move straight into the data review and get us, get grounded in some context and some data for the city. So I'm gonna hand it over to Julie for that.
Great. So I gave you an attachment ahead of time, some data. When we met last August, we had some old data and you asked for more. You asked for it to be, you know, renter versus owner, you know, just to, you needed more. You wanted some more facts. And so I've been working on that this fall with the help of our planning assistant. And so what I have is from, mostly from the American Community Survey from 2013 to 2017. Of course, 2018 just came out at the end of December, but I was not able to get everything updated. It is kinda, it didn't happen. So I, I don't, I don't see shifts necessarily. You know, I don't, I don't think the trends have changed in that one year. So, so I feel okay about this data, but I will work on updating that for you. So just to cover the highlights, hopefully you had a chance to take a look at it. I'm not gonna start talking numbers or we can be stuck here forever. But, so first of all, Richfield has a significant share of its housing that is affordable to low and moderate-income households. The percentage of affordable units has, however, been shrinking in the last few years. While we started out with a greater percentage of affordable housing than many of our peer communities, our drop has actually been greater than those peer communities. The decline in affordability has been most dramatic in ownership units. Like the rest of the metro area, however, we've also seen rents increase a lot. And our proportion of NOA housing, that housing that's affordable at 60% of the AMI, has dropped from 70% of our total rental units in 2013 to 60% in 2017. We are close to around 1,000 new apartment units, either just constructed or in the planning stages. And only about 4% to 5% of those rental units are gonna be affordable at 50% to 60% of the AMI. And I just wanna note that our inclusionary housing policy does allow payment in lieu, which is for some of the reason why it's, that it's not 20% of the total. We don't require projects not receiving financial assistance from us to provide that. So that helps explain that. And also some of that was provided through ownership units that are affordable and also through rehabbed units. So it's not that we, we aren't applying our policy, but that's the reality of how it's working out. Councilmember Whelan had asked us for an additional data point, which you'll find in the version that I handed out. I did underline the changes and additions that I made. And he was asking, you know, kind of what's the stability of our units? And the way we came at that is just to say that 15% of our apartments have some sort of income and/or rent restriction in place for a certain period of years. So I would also say, the data shows that a significant portion of our residents do spend more than 30% of their income on housing, which is defined as cost burden. That's how you define cost burden. Given the age of our rental housing stock, only a small percentage of our units, approximately 13%, have even the capacity to be physically accessible. Accessibility has been an issue that's been raised in recent months for us. And affordability and accessibility can go hand in hand. Not always, but it certainly does. I would like to point out that poverty and housing hardships do have a disproportionate impact on our residents of color. And then finally, that the Met Council has set the city's fair share of new housing that should be affordable to the very lowest-income households, which is defined at that 30% of the AMI, at being 66 units over the next 10 years. So I just want, that's something to keep in mind as, as you talk tonight.
Thank you. So go ahead and just take another minute to look at that. And then we're gonna talk about that collectively. So I'll just give you a minute if you haven't had a chance to review it yet. So before we get started on actually reviewing the data, I'm just gonna explain how we're gonna work through the process. Right here in context stage, we're gonna get some additional context about what this means and what this data means and some more definition around affordable housing. We're gonna spend some time doing some individual brainstorming and some small group work, identifying what are some of the affordable housing options or goals that we, that you have for the city. We will then be bringing things up visually on the board, so everybody will be able to see them. We'll find some commonalities and then create some cluster areas or kind of common areas where, that we'll put a title on or header on. Kind of, we won't be wordsmithing tonight, but we'll get a good concept of what is that shared consensus? What is that shared vision that we have, that you have for the city? So that's the process that we'll be going through. So we'll be doing a little bit of incorporating different learning styles as we go here tonight. When you, as you were looking at this documentation of the data and hearing Julie's review, I'm gonna ask you to do one more go-around and then I won't ask you to do it again, I promise. But I'd just like to hear, what's an image that comes to mind when you hear the words affordable housing? What's the image that comes to mind for you? Who would be willing to answer that? Start for me. What's the image?
I think what personally comes first to my mind is the affordable. I don't often think about single-family houses.
Thank you. Would you, would you like to go to your left or your right? All right, you're up.
I'm making sure I'm understanding the question. Like the image that I have of affordable housing is something like, I, when Councilmember Whelan talked about stability, I have the image of somebody with like relief on their face.
Thank you.
I think I have an image of like a family sitting around a table.
Thank you.
I guess I think back to when we first moved to Richfield in 1952. It was a two-bedroom house with a living room, a kitchen, a bathroom. And that was it. And that was affordable and it ended up supporting a family of seven kids.
Thank you.
If I'm honest, the first thing I think of is just like anxiety or panic of people who I have talked with who are looking for affordable housing.
When I think about affordable housing, I think about what I want it to be for everyone and that is a place of calm and kind of what Councilmember Troutman was saying, happiness. It's people's like sanctuary. It should be people's sanctuary. And like Councilmember Whelan said, for many, it's not.
So getting grounded in some of the data, what is, what are some of the words or phrases or data points in that data or that you heard from Julie that really kind of just stand out to you? We don't need to justify it or defend it, but what are some of the things? What are some of the words or phrases in that data that caught your attention? And then anybody can kind of answer that.
I saw the part here about the rental stock being built in the 60s. So a lot of it doesn't have accessible units and elevators.
Other things that stood out?
The cost burden that just everyone faces. That came to me too. The percentage of renters and owners who are cost-burdened in our city.
I think the, the reason I asked for this, the percentage that are income or rent restricted is, I mean, so talking about stability, the remainder of the restrictions end between 2038 and 2047. I mean, 2020 already feels like we should be in the future, but like, those numbers are so far out that to think about having stable rents for that long in those 15% of units, it just is like a miracle.
Other data points that stood out to you?
I think a couple standouts. One is just how dynamic these numbers are, that, you know, there's a, this story is, oh, we, we always have, we have more than our fair share in Richfield. And just to see, it's rapidly evaporating. That, that, that kind of urgency really stands out. And also the, the racial ownership gaps are really huge. That's just, that, that's devastating every time I read it.
Some of those other things that stand out or surprise you, that you're, you're kind of surprised to see in there?
It talks about geographically concentrated, either along 494 or in lakes at Lindell where there's seniors. And those are people that, talks about the city of area of concentrated poverty.
Other things that surprised you in the data?
I don't know, but I don't know if surprised is the right word, but finally, seeing the numbers all in one place of the recent or approved construction of 1,028 to, oh, of 1,028 that only 4% are affordable, that I, I had been like feeling that as each new development happened, but seeing that all combined in one place is like, okay, yeah, that, that's kind of what I was nervous about.
Similarly to what Councilmember Whelan said, you know, it, it's not, it's not surprising, but having the data that, that says actually in homeownership is one of the areas where we're losing the most or not losing, but we have lost the most homes that were affordable in Richfield. That that's just a huge chunk of what was there, that just, of what was. So we can't necessarily fix what, what isn't there anymore, but just recognizing that that, that's something that now is, is off the table or out of reach for a lot of community members.
Where else do you have some anxiety around the affordable housing issue or concern here in Richfield?
Well, one of the things is that I knew rents were going up, but it said that the increase was 17% between 2013 and 2017. And also for sales prices for homes, it increased 38% during those four years. And then it went up another 24%. So that's putting it out of affordability for a lot of people.
When I think about anxiety around affordable housing in Richfield, I think about the impact it has on our students and our families. We are over 70%, 72% students of color in the school district alone. And we see how disproportionately impacted communities of color in Richfield are in their families. And we had the health equity data, you know, survey and looking at the links between health and housing. And there's a lot of toxic stress. There's a lot of anxiety. There's a lot of fear around affordable housing, around the quality of that housing and, and stability. And that is affecting a huge proportion of our families with children.
Other elements of anxiety we would like to share?
I think just combining the, the cost burden statistics with kind of our future development statistics that already the housing stock we have, I mean, people are living in it and they're, they're figuring out a way to get by, but they're, like, almost exactly half of renters are cost-burdened. And yet, all of our new development is just more expensive. And I, I don't, I don't think we should never build housing for, for residents who don't yet live in Richfield, but I just that it, it feels like, for, for me, the housing, the housing stock we have is very literally like who we are allowing to call Richfield home. And it just feels like we are purposely or not, we're shifting who we want and will allow to live here.
Where do you have some hope around this affordable housing issue or, or just affordable housing in Richfield? Where do you have some hope?
We're continuing the conversation about it, right? I think that we're constantly reevaluating it.
I think one of the things that Commissioner Elliott pointed out a while back is that if we're creating new things, that takes the stress off, so there's less of a chance for gentrification and trying to flip things if we can take some of the pressure off by creating new housing. So that gives me a little bit of hope too. And we have to keep working at the affordability part of it. But if we can at least take off the pressure to, so people aren't trying to flip things and gentrify everything.
I think two places I find hope. One is that everyone else at this table was at, in the same, at the same table for one role or another two and a half years ago and decided that this is a priority and was working on policies to address this. So I think we, we've certainly stalled a bit, but there's, there's been a desire for that. And then the other, the other thing that gives me hope and I think keeps us moving is all of the community members who are here, that that's what inspired, that group inspired me to run for office in the first place and they, they still care about this and are pushing on it. And so that gives me hope.
Similar to that, I would also echo the community members who are here and have been doing really great work for a long time. And paired with that is everybody's willingness to talk about this issue and its complexity from staff to council members to commission members to community members coming together, because it is not on any one person and there's not a quick fix. And we need to keep revisiting and keep revisiting and keep updating all of our work to, to do better every single time. And I see that willingness on behalf of everybody.
Yeah, I think I would, I would echo that, that, that the presence of so many people here on a conversation like this is, is really hopeful. And then also just really grateful for our staff, who I think have, not, not that they were ever not aware this wasn't important, but just with increasing clarity and leadership are making this a priority for the city. So I appreciate that.
You've talked about some needs around why this is important, but what are some other things that we should be aware of that are important, that are driving the need for the affordable housing here in the city of Richfield that maybe hasn't been mentioned yet?
I think by far the reality that how we define affordable is, I mean, and it, it makes sense to be in, doing it the same way as our regional partners and other cities, but we are, we're defining it based on an area median income that is significantly higher than Richfield's median income, certainly than renters' median income in Richfield. And so I think, I think we, we need to, I think we have been, but need to continue recognizing that how we define affordable is not always helpful and that something that's affordable to someone making 60% AMI is still out of reach for around half or more of our renters. And so I, I think we're, we're starting to recognize those different values, but that, I mean, personally, I think our goal should always be that 100% of our housing is affordable for whoever's living in it. And the, the question needs to be then what percent of it is income-restricted and at what levels?
Could you repeat the question?
What are some other needs that are kind of driving the affordable housing topic here? What else are you seeing as a need in the city for, for the affordable housing?
Well, one of the things that has come up is that while we may have affordable housing, we don't have accessible affordable housing. And there's a significant portion of the community that needs accessibility. And we don't have anything that they can afford.
I guess for me, it's the fact that kids in school need to stay in school where they are. They don't, we don't want them moving around, going from apartment to apartment to community to community because they can't afford where they're living. We want to encourage students to stay in the community and graduate and move on successfully.
I think it's important to, to look at this issue as not a specific issue just about affordable housing, but you know, see it and, and attack it at the level that it's connected to a lot of other things, such as employment. And as we look at the, the change in Richfield and the growth around commercial as well, how, how is displacement and affordability all connected, not just in housing, but with our small businesses? And when, as the changes are happening, what are the patterns? You know, east versus west, Richfield versus along the highways? And how are we being intentional about helping our growth be really integrated across the whole city?
And what are some of the challenges the city is facing?
I think one of the challenges is the age of our housing. Whether it's apartments or, or single-family homes, a lot of things need rehabs and we've been trying to figure out ways to do that. And I think that also applies to small businesses. Like how can they keep their facilities in good shape? And what can we do for energy efficiency? And it's just, the whole infrastructure is aging.
I think too that we are landlocked, right? So if something new is being built, something's going over something else, right? There isn't a lot of open room for development.
I would also say that I think at least the, there's some people attempting to change the conversation, but at least the, the conversation for a while and for the foreseeable future around housing is dependent on developers who, for better or for worse, are, are trying to make a profit. That our housing is, is something that people profit off of. And so I think we're, we're trying to address like a, a human rights need and a social service need with, with entities who are wondering like, okay, but what's the bottom line? And I, that's not to completely vilify developers, but that's just a reality that makes it challenging.
I'd also say one of the, the, maybe not, not as often talked about challenges is sort of how we got here in our history and sort of the, the infrastructure that didn't come out of nowhere, but came out of generations of decisions that, that we've been making consciously and unconsciously. And whether that's, you know, the, the history of racial covenants that we, that we have that have been becoming ever more explicitly clear. I had a conversation this last week with a resident, a multi-generational, like fourth, four generations in Richfield, and he had heard that I was talking about racial covenants. He's like, I heard something, I know this is not true, that we didn't let people of color buy here or something like that. And we were able to look at the map, a mapping prejudice. And we say, and he's like, is that my block? And he's like, oh, God, no, no. And we looked out, he's like, no, that, that's my whole block. My whole block was exclusive to people of color when, you know, when we built the city. And so we've, from that kind of granular level up through policy decisions about where we put highways and where we put walls and where we locate multifamily housing and everything, those are, you know, we can't change the past, but I feel like we need to, we need to talk about that elephant in the room and unpack that and as cautionary tales for us as we make decisions today. And also just to say, well, how do we, how do we reckon with those decisions that we've made?
So when you think about that, when, going back to our question, what should affordable housing look like in the city of Richfield? What would be an example of something that you think should be in place? What should affordable housing look like? Who has an example that they could share of what that might look like for you? A concrete example? And I'll help you out here. An example might be you have a percent of affordable housing in the city. Or maybe you have blank number of units available. Um, just a couple, so what would you say is, uh, how might you answer this question? What is one element that should be considered for affordable housing to look like in the city of Richfield? More accessible housing for handicap. What might be another example?
I'll repeat what I said before, that a hundred percent of the housing should be affordable. And I, yeah, I don't know what percent that is income restricted, but, um, would expect that that would be a variety of. Income restriction levels and not just all at fifty or sixty.
I think there should also be access to green space and it should be in all parts of the city and not just putting the affordable housing. You know, stuck somewhere off by an industrial park or something.
All right, so I'm gonna ask you to grab a white piece of paper that you have on your basket there and you're gonna do a couple of individual, just moments of individual brainstorming and thinking. Just create a list for yourself, try to get ten, twelve, as many ideas as you can, this is no filter, this is your own thinking. Um, what are, and we're answering that question, what should affordable housing look like in the city of Richfield? Just take a moment for yourself. Give you another minute and then we'll come back together. So go ahead and take a look at your lists and put a star next to the six, either best ideas, most critical ideas, ones you think somebody else won't think of. Just star your top six from your brainstorm list. We have our six starred. So in just a minute, I'm gonna put you in small groups, but I'm gonna give you instructions first. I'm gonna ask you to share the six that you starred with your, uh, with your partner. And collectively, I'm gonna ask you to come up with ten to eleven elements or goals or, um, you know. What are, what are those things that need to be in place per team? You're gonna write one goal per half sheet, uh, the white half sheets in front of you, please write big so that you can see them. Once we place them on the wall. Use your markers and landscape weight and then write three to seven words, enough words so we understand what it means. So, um, three to seven words, not so much that we're so restricted, but just that we have a comp, we can comprehend what it is. And I'll just ask you to turn to your neighbor and then you can just, so Erin, yeah, there you go, turn to your neighbor, you'll have a little. Three, four, five minutes to come up with those ten to eleven ideas.
I didn't get to ten, I'm sorry. And then private, you know, you don't wanna have to hear your neighbors. Fourteen, okay. Oh, you can allow it clean. Is it, is this walkable?
Yeah. Should we just say or walkable?
Okay. This could be.
Go ahead and start writing your cards as you start coming into agreement.
What's the word? Segregated. That's fine. Yeah, throughout the city. So what are we doing, we're putting up? Three to seven words per element or goal. How does it say mixed in with all? Types of housing. The accessibility, I think, is important. Auditory, wow, that does look like it. Uh, you're, you're thinking of sound there?
Yeah.
I would say that's a separate. Not just mobile.
Accessible.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
What else do you want?
Uh, good quality. Fixed up. Clean and repaired.
We haven't started that conversation. That worked?
Mm-hmm.
What's our topic, just affordable? Yeah, that's fine. Did we get the diverse, all over the city, was that understood under the diverse?
That's all over the city.
It's dispersed. We don't want segregated areas. Dispersed, okay, all types of housing dispersed, yeah, that's good.
All right, so you said diverse.
Design. What were these two words?
Styles, that's private.
Designs and styles, okay.
Great, so.
Yeah.
Variety of sizes.
That's diverse design, styles and sizes.
Okay, so how else we do this?
Oh, we didn't have access to.
Um, I know, cause I dropped my dog off.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. My, my wife works from home, so I dropped her off. Otherwise, though, I'd be.
Ten to eleven of them?
We've got four.
Okay.
Ten to eleven?
Ten to eleven. Or, or whatever you give.
Did we say rental or ownership already? I think you hit them.
Writing a couple more cards yet, so we'll just give it another minute and then we'll come back together as a full group. All right, go ahead and lay your cards out in front of you so you can see them. I'm gonna ask you to hand up three of your clearest ideas. They may not be the best, the most important, but really are very easy to understand. You can give me three or four, depending on how many cards you have. You can keep writing if you, if you come up with some ideas. And all, all the cards will end up in the end, we're just gonna bring them up in three rounds. So you guys can give me four if you want. You've got plenty. All right, so I'm gonna read these and put them up on the wall and then I'll ask if we need any clarification about them. Desegregation of affordable housing around the city. Map out NOAA buildings with action plans. Strengthen inclusionary housing policy. HRA funding separate from TIF, TIF portions. Promoting different types of affordable tiny houses. Accessible, A, is that ADA?
No.
ADU, thank you. Universal design, make everything have a level of accessibility. Multifamily co-ops. Accessible, not just mobility, but visually and auditorily. Access to transit or walkable or, transit or walkable or bikeable. Mixed in with all types of housing dispersed throughout the city. Thank you. What questions of clarification do we have on any of those? Where do you see two cards, two ideas that are leading you down the similar path? For what is that kind of goal or area or element that we should be considering? Yeah.
The desegregation of affordable housing, how do you mix, uh, mix in with all types of housing?
Okay, where do you see another relationship, another pairing?
Accessible?
With? Okay, how about another relationship, new relationship? Leading you towards the same kind of element or goal? Nothing going naturally yet? Okay, why don't you look back at your cards and give me two more ideas that are different? Now, I should have like three from you and three from you guys. I'll take two from you guys. It's okay, it's already, that's fine. They'll all get on the wall anyway. All right, we're gonna read the new ones and see what new relationships we can find. Diverse designs, styles and sizes. Access to green space. Just cause non-renewal. Racial equity in homeownership. Required percent of units accessible tied to inclusionary housing policy. Proactive policies. Infrastructure changes. Good quality fix-up or new safe clean. Questions of clarification? Where do you find new relationships now? Yes, absolutely.
What do you mean by infrastructure changes?
The group that wrote that.
Infrastructure changes, you know, there's certain parts of our infrastructure that we recognize are, are problematic. We can't change all of them, but we can be looking at ways that we can modify, yeah, our, our infrastructure to make sure that it's equitable. And doesn't disadvantage folks that have, uh, or that, that, that have affordable housing or doesn't, uh, diminish affordable housing. Um, the opportunity for affordable housing in the city.
Can you give us an example?
Sure, so, so an example of that is right now, we're, we're looking at, um, uh, Mindot is looking to take access points, um, for the four ninety-four. Um, on Niklet Avenue and Twelfth Avenue, which will make, um, parts of east Richfield that have a lot of affordable housing. Less accessible to the broader community, which will have an impact on that, on that housing. And, and so making sure that we have opportunities to, to not, that we don't, we don't make those same mistakes. Or if we can look, we have, we have a wall that separates affordable housing from, uh, multifamily housing. Are there places where we can take that wall down? Are there places that we can, um, that, that we can look at how we built our city and how we're building our city and, and make it more equitable?
All right, other questions of clarification? Where do you see a new relationship now, or two ideas that are leading you down the same path? They may not be about the same words, but they're leading you down the same path.
The strength in inclusionary housing policy and proactive policies.
I think that access to.
I think that access to transit and the infrastructure changes are kinda heading in the same direction.
I would say access to green spaces, not that they encompass each other, but that that one fits in that category too.
And this one here?
Yeah, that those are, that and the transit, walkable, bikeable stuff are specifics within the infrastructure changes.
So what would be just one word that would hold these cards together? What are we talking about? Infrastructure? Okay, where, where else do you see either new relationships forming or cards going into existing relationships?
Promoting different types of, and diverse designs, yeah, and multifamily co-op.
And what was the third one?
Diverse designs.
And what are we talking about here? What's this about? One word. It's the link.
Options.
Okay. Where else do you see things coming together? Racial equity in homeownership, just cause non-renewal, HRA funding separate from TIF portions, map out NOAA buildings with action plans, required percent of units accessible, good quality.
I think the required percent of units accessible fits in with the other accessible, universal design stuff, and could be termed accessibility. And then I also see a link, um, between the mapping out NOAA buildings with action plans, um, and the, the good quality fixed up or new, um, they're somewhat related. I think good quality also relates to new housing, but, yeah.
Okay.
Just cause non-renewal, go with.
It's a proactive policy, but it's kind of a different category.
So we're not, oh, that was at the end. I was looking for it. Do these naturally fit as you can see it right now? Let's identify, what is this one here talking about? What are we talking about with these two here? Strengthening inclusionary housing policy and proactive policies. What's the link?
Thoughtful planning.
Or like future, or, yeah.
Yeah. And these purple cards will go away. Just holding them together, our thinking right now. And how about this one? The segregation of affordable housing around city and mixed in with all types of housing. What's the, what's that?
Integration.
Integration? And how about this one here?
Perhaps the racial equity in homeownership could fall under that category.
Okay. And what's this one about?
Preservation.
Or quality.
Or quality? Okay, how about just cause non-renewal or HR, HRA funding separate from TIF? Where might those fit, or are they stand-alones?
Could be under policy, the HRA funding.
Can we have clarification too, of where that's going?
Yeah, I, to be fully transparent, I'm thinking of the, the enclave proposal, and just that, the, the argument for providing city, providing TIF, um, funding for the proposal, um, is that a portion of it will come back and be able to fund our other programs? And right now, we're set up in a way that that is how the HRA is funded. Whereas, I think, um, I think if there, if the HRA had its own levy that was funding it, and we weren't so reliant on TIF for, for future, like, giving TIF to future projects that are maybe market rate and less of a, a priority for our work, um, yeah, that, I'm not, I'm not convinced on that, but I would like to explore that, because I don't think that depending on adding new TIF districts is the, is the best in line with our, some of the priorities we've stated, or the most reliable way to fund the important programs we have in our HRA.
So that could be an upcoming work session to talk about some of that?
Yeah.
Don't we do that already? I mean, it probably isn't enough, the levy, but we do already have a levy.
And I'm not on the HRA, so I may have misunderstood this.
John Stark, the executive director of the HRA, uh, just for clarification, yeah, the HRA does have a levy, and we, the HRA currently levies to the maximum amount the law would allow.
Okay, thank you.
But we do take TIF as well on behalf of it, right? So it's, it's both, yeah.
The just cause non-renewal, does that have place here? Does it?
I think it's planning.
So you've still got some cards in front of you. You'll notice on those purple cards, there is a symbol. If you could use a marker and put the symbol on the cards you have in front of you, and you can go ahead and take them up to the wall and place them under the category, or if they don't, just set them off to the side if they don't fit.
I'm thinking more of, more unis. I don't know. I can't figure it out. What else is in there? Desegregation of housing. Mixed in those.
You can bring them on up.
Back for planning. Options.
In the way.
Action plans.
I'm also wondering if it's a new category of stability.
I don't know, choose which one.
Not that that's completely separate from everything else, but. Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. I'll let you.
Well, all your cards should be up. You shouldn't have any left in front of you. So I'm gonna read the new ideas. Uh, we'll verify if we all agree that they're in the area that they make the most sense. So under preservation and quality, we've added housing free of, of environmental hazards. Does that fit there? Under options, we've got tenant op.
Opportunity.
Thank you, alright, tenant opportunity to purchase. Options for rental and ownership, plentiful supply. Nothing under infrastructure, accessibility or integration. Under thoughtful planning, we've added required minimums for percent of affordable housing and proactive development plan. Do those fit in those categories? So now, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna kind of, we're gonna put a name or a title. What are we talking about? What is that element that, that, uh, is important to us that we're paying attention to? So starting with these options, can somebody, can you send me, read those out for me, who can see them?
Promoting different types of affordable housing, multifamily, co-op, diverse design styles, and sizes, tenant opportunities to purchase, options for rental and ownership, plentiful supply.
What are some of the key words that are, um, that are listed here? That you heard read out?
Diverse.
Options.
Plentiful.
What are we talking about here? What's this group of cards about?
Choices.
Choices, what else?
Just sheer numbers.
Choices, numbers, what else is this column about?
I see it's creative new ways to have affordable housing that isn't just monetary.
Creative new ways for housing? What else?
To give people choices so that you're not locked into one cookie cutter thing.
Alright, so what we're gonna do now is, we're gonna kind of identify and answer the statement. One element or goal for the city of Richfield when it comes to affordable housing is what? As it relates to that column? How would we finish that statement? One element or goal for the city of Richfield is? You've stated choices, numbers, creating new ways for housing, giving people choices. What's the statement that, what is that about?
To provide plentiful and diverse options for residents.
Alright, what else? Who else has an idea?
To have one, at least one multifamily co-op that is affordable, uh, in Richfield in the next four years.
Another option somebody sees. What is it that we're saying? One element or goal for the city of Richfield is to provide plentiful and diverse options for residents? Or one, to have one multifamily co-op that is affordable in the next four years?
I think, um, one element or goal is to have, uh, diversity or options within affordable housing, and not just between market rate and affordable housing.
So have diverse option, uh, diverse options within affordable housing?
Yeah. Just naming that I think we often talk about diversity of housing styles, and that means that some are affordable and some are not. Or has meant that.
So I'm gonna read the three that were kind of stated out, and let's see which way we're leaning. Uh, one element or goal for the city of Richfield is to have, to provide plentiful and diverse options for residents, to have one multifamily co-op that is affordable in the next four years, to have diversity options within affordable housing. Where are you leaning? Which one answers that for you?
I think you could combine the first and the last one pretty, um, closely. I think they're very similar.
Do you have a suggestion there?
Uh, no, 'cause I'm not looking at it, but, so something around, um, the first one says diverse and whatever options, and then adding the, the line within affordable housing.
So provide plentiful and diverse options within affordable housing for all residents.
Yeah.
Is, is everybody in agreement that that answers that for everybody? Alright, so I'm gonna write that out, while I'm gonna ask somebody else why you're doing that, to read through this, that column over there.
Strengthen inclusionary housing policy. Have proactive policies. HRA funding separate from TIF portions. Just cause non-renewal. Required minimums for percentage of affordable housing. Proactive development plan.
What are some of the key words there? Strengthen? Strengthen and proactive, what else? What are you talking about there?
Inclusionary.
Inclusionary? What are you talking about there?
Yeah, policies.
Policies? What else is that group about?
I think the word required is really important. That affordability and stability for our residents should not be optional.
Alright, thank you. I just delegated my scribing so I could pay attention. Alright, so what, share with me again, what's this, what do we hold, what's this story that's being told by those cards?
That we need a, a plan for now and into the future that requires that, um, like, future development and housing plans are creating the affordable community we wanna live in.
This, this isn't gonna fit tightly on a soundbite, um, but one component of our proactive planning, I'd like to see us do some thinking in, I, an ideation about the, the business cycle and housing cycle. So we're not just thinking about what we're doing in the next couple of years, but when there's another recession and market correction, what are we doing that's going to expand? Like, how do we take, how do we take those opportunities that are coming in five or 10 years to really expand affordable housing? And, and hold on to it? Because we had, we had an ocean of affordable housing in 2009, and, and it's, it's all but vanished now. So there'll be another 2009, and if we could spend our time thinking about the problem today, but also thinking about the problem, you know, five and 10 years from now. So when those opportunities come, or we have some plans in place, I mean, you can't know perfectly, but if you could just, whatever that is, in 10 words.
How about long-term proactive planning?
There it is, thank you, thank you, council member.
So we've heard, um, something around ideation, um, about businesses and housing cycles, uh, plan for now and in the future, and long-term proactive planning. Which one captures it for us? Or what, what other discussions do we wanna have here?
I guess, I don't, I just, I don't wanna lose that we already have some of these policies. That, like, we've already started these conversations, like, yes, I, to capture all of this, it's probably gonna have to be a big visionary statement. But I also think, and I mean, in our August session, we started conversations around some pretty specific ways to work on this, and I think there was interest then. So I wanna capture both the, the large-scale vision and also the specifics.
Who can put that together for us?
One element or goal for the city of Richfield is long-term proactive planning that will strengthen our inclusionary housing policy.
That's a specific policy.
So one?
Strengthen our, I don't know, future development plans, or?
Future affordability.
Yeah, long, or long-term affordability, yeah, I don't know.
So is it? Is it about creating this long-term planning and vision, but then make, ensuring we have the right tools, the, the right fit of tools to, to achieve that vision? Something like that.
Create long-term vision and planning and have tools?
The right tools to, to, yeah, achieve that vision.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, so the, what we've got is, uh, one element or goal for the city of Richfield is to create long-term vision and planning, and have the right tools to achieve, achieve it, or achieve?
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing. How does that answer that for people? Is, can we live with it, knowing that we can spruce it up? Is, can we live with the concept?
So I have a question about this one around the concept. So I think we could easily say we do have long-term planning and vision and tools, and that's our comprehensive plan, and, and a lot of other things. So like, I just wanna have the conversation, like, I don't think that that's what this is. So what it, what is this to differentiate from, from that?
I think the focus is on the affordable housing part of it, and the justice part of it.
Well, the word proactive is up there twice. It's an action kind of thing.
So you talked about proactive, you talked about strengthen, uh, you've talked about justice, affordable housing. What is this, what is the element or the nuanced element that this grouping is about?
Maybe it's, because I like this idea of, of tools, or I guess, strength, to me, it, like, strengthening or passing additional, like, tools to, I don't know, to make it more likely that we're actually gonna hit our vision. Because I think we're, we're currently on a trajectory to not hit that. And so I, I think something about innovation, or about new tools, or additional tools, needs to be in there. And so I, I think something about innovation or about new tools or additional tools needs to be in there.
How do we put that together? They heard is strengthen, uh, are, or passing additional tools to achieve our vision. We've heard justice, affordable housing, innovation, additional tools. How do we state this? What's important?
One element or goal for the city of Richfield is to create proactive policies and tools to achieve our long-term vision.
To create proactive policies and tools to reach our vision? How does that sit? Does that, is it, can we, will we know what that means when we look back at that next week?
Vision for affordability.
Vision for affordability. We have create proactive policies and tools to reach our vision for affordability. Does that answer that for you? Can we live with that? We live with the concept of that? I'm seeing nods, so we're gonna go with that one. Alright, we only got four more and, you know, like, 20 minutes, or 17, but we'll go. Who can read this one for me? We're gonna be fairly quick so we can get to our ending conversation.
Noa buildings with action plans, good quality, fixed up or new, safe, clean, housing free of environmental hazards.
What are we talking about here? What are these three cards? What's the story?
It's about preserving and protect, or preserving, protecting and improving our existing Noah housing.
Preserving, protecting and improving, was that it? Noah housing?
I guess preserve and protect might be the same thing, but, yeah.
What do others think? Does that preserve, protect and improve Noah housing? Does that get us to the concept of what those cards are about?
Can we throw quality in there? The quality of Noah housing?
Through the qual, preserve, protected, preserve, protect and improve the quality of Noah housing.
We can remove the word housing.
Remove the word housing? So preserve, protect and improve the quality of Noah? Got it, good, good job. Let's move to this one. Who can read, what is it, what did we say that was titled under infrastructure?
Access to transit or walkable, bikeable, infrastructure changes and access to.
And what's this one about? What are we talking about here?
Infrastructure that provides access.
Let's build from that. What, what modifications might you make to that?
We add the word equitable.
Equitable access?
I almost wonder if this is the same, really the same category as the integration. If the goal, if the combining statement for both of them is, um, that are affordable, the goal for Richfield is for our affordable housing to be fully integrated into, um, our community as a whole and to have equitable access to all its amenities or something like that.
So fully integrated into our community and what was the second half?
Um, and have equal, equitable access to all its amenities.
What do other people think?
Did we lose the racial piece? I don't know if that's what you're gonna say, sorry.
No, but, yeah, I think, I think it's important not to lose that. I was gonna momentarily derail us in the last 14 minutes that we have. But just something that, um, a couple of my colleagues have mentioned, which is sort of the a, a parallel gentrification phenomenon of losing small businesses is something that's happening in our community. A couple of folks mentioned that. And so I don't know if it fits in this conversation here, but I think it's important enough that it, it deserves attention, even if it, cuz we framed the conversation in a way it didn't include that. I just wanna make sure if we're not talking about it here, we're talking about somewhere else, it just falls into the conversation.
You could add it under the create proactive policies and tools to reach our vision for affordability and small business ownership or something.
Council, council member Supple's on a roll tonight.
Can you share that with us again?
Just add for affordability and small business ownership.
Oh, there we go. And are we all in agreement that that's okay? Alright, how about back to this, uh, cat, this idea that we were combining these two columns? Fully integrated into the city, community and equitable access to all amenities.
I don't know how to put it in that sentence, but I don't want to lose the racial equity piece.
I also feel, I also feel comfortable just making racial equity and addressing that a standalone issue and goal that warrants its own consideration.
So creating its own category?
Yeah.
So what, what would we, what would we put around, what would enter the statement around racial equity? Just quickly and easily.
Taking racial equity into consideration in every action and decision across the board.
Taking racial equity into consideration with every decision.
Yeah.
Does that make sense? And I'm hearing that's kind of an overarching title.
Yeah.
Alright, what do we got going on with this integration?
Racial equities is all.
We're just recruiting all sorts of people here.
That's the one we just did.
Going with what we had? Or what, can we, do you have, can you read what you had?
So.
Can you repeat it?
One element or goal for the city of Richfield is to fully integrate affordable housing into the community and provide equitable access to all its.
To all amenities.
Yes, okay.
Does that answer that or do we need to nuance that a little bit? Seeing, seeing nods that it works? Alright.
Equitable is equitable.
What was that?
Equitable is equitable. Fair for everyone.
Okay. And what do we got here for accessibility? Require percent of units accessible tied to inclusionary housing, universal design and accessible. What are we talking about here? What is it about accessibility that we need to call out here?
To me, this falls under some of these other things, right? So it has plenty of diverse options. Much like the racial equity, accessibility might fall into each one of them as well.
Okay.
Taking racial equity.
Racial equity and accessibility? And then do we just disperse these around? Do we have, where would they, where might they fit?
They could fit well.
Go ahead.
I, I actually, I think a more important thing that Maria and I were just realizing, we don't, we don't have stability in any part of this. I mean, it's certain, housing stability, it's certainly related to some of these other ones, but, such as the preserving Noah housing, the just cause renewal under the proactive policies. Um, but I don't wanna lose the goal of, um, not just creating a housing stock that people can find an option they like, but having long-term stability within whatever housing they are in or whatever they find.
And would you, are you looking at a title or just an additional card so we don't lose the concept?
I don't know.
Cuz you can go ahead and write a card if, if, if everybody's in agreement that we don't wanna lose that thought.
Would accessibility and stability both go under proactive policies?
So these might go under proactive policies to find a home for them. And then we've got a card being written so that we make sure the white cards live. Alright, we're moving right along. We've got all of our ti, our four titles. If I could ask somebody to read our question here and then our overarching and then our yellow cards. Could somebody read those for me? So reading this one here.
What should affordable housing look like in the city of Richfield? Taking the racial equity and accessibility consideration as a part of all decision-making. To preserve, protect and improve the quality of Noah. Have plenty of diverse options within affordable housing for all residents. Fully integrate affordable housing into the community and provide equitable access to all its amenities. Create proactive policies and tools to reach our vision for affordability and small business.
Alright, give yourselves a round of applause. You did a lot of work. It's a lot of hard work, right? So which one of these can you see, uh, implementing pretty easily with some of the things you already have going within the city?
The, um, just strategies to protect and improve the quality of our existing Noah. I mean, one of the best ways to keep our housing affordable is to keep the housing we have that is affordable right now.
What else can you see that you're gonna be able to work based on the strength of where the city's already moving or has in place? Where can you build on some of this?
I feel like we're all in agreement that taking racial equity and accessibility into consideration can be part of all of our decision-making. That's just a conversation we have every single time we.
I think kind of, kind of along those lines, um, even as we're, and I just defer to staff as they, as they would think about how to implement this, but we, in our memos, we kinda have a, almost a liturgy of things that we consider. We consider legal implications, we consider other areas. We have timing considerations. Um, I would love to see, you know, accessibility and equity considerations just being, we put that lens on and we don't, we don't put out a memo, we don't, we don't go through that process without saying, well, what are the legal considerations? What are that, so that would be one way that we could institutionally raise that, our consciousness.
I'll be a broken record and say I, I still think the, um, under the proactive policies, I think there's things we've already explored. I know before I was on the council, there is a, a huge chart of 30 some options to pick from and we passed a couple. I know the inclusionary housing policy was one of them. I still think that needs strengthening, but, um, I think we have specific policies that we can revisit, um, and continue that conversation.
Which of these are kind of most critical right now that are gonna have the biggest impact on your residents?
I think, um, the proactive policies and tools, because as we know and see and experience, I mean, there's proposals coming to us all the time constantly and so, um, we are really in that balancing act of the gentrification happening to our city right now and achieving, um, our attempts to achieve affordable housing and how far we have or have not come. So that's happening and it's not gonna stop, it's gonna keep going, so that's a concern.
Other thoughts of which ones up there is really critical right now?
You know, the preserve, protect and improve the quality of Noah, every day that passes that we aren't doing something there, it's either getting worse or we're losing.
So where do you, when you see these up here and you know that your staff's time is really valuable, where is it that you would say we need to spend some specific energy there in 2020, knowing we maybe can't do everything? Where would you put some priority?
Well, I think there's a lot of transportation proposals and development proposals coming forward. So I think the fully integrating and providing access to the amenities would be important when we're making all kinds of decisions.
I, I still think the, um, as, um, Maria said, the Noah plan coming up with, and I don't know exactly what that looks like, whether it's finding additional funding for the apartment rehab fund or simply, um, I know we've talked for a couple of years now of mapping out, um, where the Noah units are. Um, Noah buildings, what their kind of condition or needs are, how at risk they are, um, and creating an action plan there. Uh, so that I think is one big priority and then again, broken record back to the policies.
And to the extent that I, I sound like a broken record, I wanna thank our staff for including the, the homeownership data. Cuz it's one, an area where we were amazing and we've lost the most ground in, in terms of affordable housing. And so just being able to track that is, I think we're be, we're able to identify that problem and put words and numbers around that. And so as we think about our mapping and, and I'm thinking in our, in our long-term strategic planning of next time there's a market correction, how do we make sure, how do we use housing trusts? How do we look at, like, we can start to put those relationships in place now so that five, 10 years down the road, we may be in a place to really create more opportunities than we have right now in that, in that space too.
In our li, in our last couple of minutes here, what are some messages that you want the community to know regarding your vision for affordable housing here in Richfield? What are some of those messages that is important for, for you guys to share?
I think humanizing renters, which seems absurd that we even have to say that, but we've had, uh, city council meetings and HRA meetings where, um, homeowners in town have come and spoken against rental housing simply because it was rental housing and just spout some really awful stereotypes about renters. And I, it, of course, we can ignore that as policymakers, but I think spreading positive messages as well. Um, and also within that, just being more specific about like who, who is living in the affordable housing we have, that when we, when we're trying to get a unit that has 30% AMI affordable or a building with 30% affordable AMI units, that we're talking about like, that's our, our PCAs and some of our school workers and, um, like, so I think unpacking a little bit with more narrative, what some of these numbers actually mean and who they look like and why we want them to be a part of our community.
I feel like Sweet Street did a really awesome job with that, of like, transportation and you're right, like, humanizing that part of housing and getting to know your neighbors and who they are is such a great idea.
Anything else we wanna make note of?
Um, I think it fits really nicely with our, um, vision of the urban hometown and it is about having a community that is welcoming and affordable for everyone to have call home and so making the connection to affordable housing. And the con, and that is really what's at the foundation of this urban hometown concept.
Oh, yeah, so, uh, just with that, I'm gonna thank you for your time and attention tonight and I'll hand it back.
Alright, um, we're about to go over to the council chambers for the HRA meeting and I'd like to invite the community to join us if they'd like to participate. Thank you. Well.
What's next? I would like to figure that out before.
Before we close?
I mean, this is great, but we also haven't accomplished, we have accomplished a vision and that's not nothing. But I would like to know what comes next so that we can take action.
Yeah, and, you know, as a staff person, I don't, I don't feel like it's appropriate for me to tell, but we were hoping to get from you what the action steps would be or that it would at least be a collaborative process. You know, I think we can take from this and provide you a report and give you some ideas on what action steps might be, um, and then reconvene.
Yeah, I would say that would, reconvening would be good.
And my comment is there's only six of us here. There's quite a few people missing. You may wanna share this with the rest of them to see if they have the same feelings.